First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here. Be interested to come to the meeting and see what's going on in the county and be concerned about it. Like to welcome everybody here again, but before we get started, if you've got a cellphone, please turn it off on the side now or turn it off. First, I want everybody to stand and take off your cap. I'm glad you're a Brother Town Hall. The leaders in the world are there. And the main thing is to take...
I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thanks everybody for coming out and first thing on again, I guess you might... We would be able to considerate approval of safety freedom budget amendment 2020, that's B A 1011. And it had to be ran in paper. We've been playing the paper last week when we did some dates and times, so we'll get that in the paper and take care of it next time. Just a wet paint. Can we get it on the...
Yeah.
Okay. Consideration approval of the wet paint fuel bill. Have a look.
Motion. Do you give a figure on that judge?
The number is eighty-six, eighty-seven, seventy-seven. And that does have finance charging nine oh two oh eight, where it was taken on time last month.
Okay, then the lady's the amount, Christian.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven, seventy-seven.
So we went up to a nine hundred two dollar length fee, correct?
Yes.
That's included in that figure?
Yeah. Now, the last time we added the finance charges to the wrong department, this time I did not, I divided it for the other clients.
My question is why is it late?
Uh, it wasn't planned on time last month.
All right, Roy, Ray Moore made a motion to pay a fuel bill on a amount of eighty-six, eighty-seven, seventy-seven, including late charging, that second? Donnie Bush. Roy Darrell. Ray Moore. Hillary Clinton. Okay, next thing is consideration and approved to amend the ABC fund, fund, back to the, on the 2020 police intercepter. And also a set to rate of pay of ABC appointed finance. We had a meeting on October the 21st, I think it was, and I made a motion to appoint the three officers and y'all didn't set their pay and then next meeting came in and voted ten thirty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents on the police intercepter. And I talked to Rich Orson Dean, actually talked to him again this morning. With that thing to do, the need, and we have five fleet recruiters, I think, and one who loaded down any. And got two new ones coming. I want to make a motion to amend the budget, put that back in the ABC account.
Who's decision is that made, Judge? Is that the person's decision?
It's your decision.
You already made that decision, huh?
Uh, yeah. You made the decision.
You made the decision, first of all, to be here.
Right, I made a motion to put the fund back in, that second. On second, that motion. Roy Darrell. Pimora.
No.
Hill Tenter.
No.
Donnie Bush.
No.
All right, motion made. Consideration of approval to defer payment to public entry insurance in a amount of fifteen thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars for installment number three of nineteen twenty BMIC insurance agreement. Now, motion.
This is a policy that's due for our office or department. Our annual training will drop in a couple of months, so this will be our motion.
Say it.
Hill Tenter. Pimora.
Uh.
Hill Tenter.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Roy Darrell. Motion carried. Consideration of approval to defer payment to Kentucky River Animal Shelter in a amount of six thousand dollars for what are they due? And, now, motion.
Motion, second.
Hill Tenter.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Motion carried. And two, just a little, they've been sending us a bill for seventy-five hundred dollars for, I think, they want since I've been in there, actually. And I talked to the other judges in Bury County and Jeff Boxton, and they continue to pay six thousand dollars. We haven't had a contract now with them when it last, you know, like, it's been a couple of three months anyway. And, so in the meantime, if they take six thousand, we're going to continue to stay with Animal Shelter and Hazard, but I talked to the judge in Estha County, and he's agreed to sixty-two hundred dollars. I think it's a million, I think it's sixty-two, might be sixty-two, please. But, if we go to where they're going, ain't going to let us take them, but if they make a statement by one, we'll get together and have a meeting and draw a contract.
Is that what they're going to make, very good, debate, save the balance of stuff?
They've been sending everybody out, and as far as I know, nobody's unpaid over six thousand. But, and it's been that way, it's been that way all last year, positive.
Yeah, Jayo won't pay the seventy-five hundred dollars.
So I did want to throw that in there. Okay, consideration approved to authorize the county judges to execute a contract with mudcat construction for completion of real pilot job related to F E M A D R forty-three fifty-eight, P W being number forty-seven and number eighty-six. I guess this is something that we should have been doing all along according to the law, but we have never, this is our first point, is I'm aware of negotiating contracts. We're going to be just more than a job, and we've done it, reaching with that kind of files and documentation, we've never done that, so.
When you had a contract with mudcat for previous work, they...
When we were bidding, we didn't do a contract after we bided it, so this is going to be the first time we've done a contract that we've bided. So, do we have a motion? Is that you, Hillary Clinton? Donnie Bush. Roy Darrell.
Uh.
Ray Moore.
Uh.
Hillary Clinton.
Uh.
Motion carried. Okay, consideration approval of Breckin County Clerk 2020 budget. Last meeting we had, Donnie had lined out a couple of numbers, and y'all going to go ahead and approve that budget, the only thing is, it's not a balanced budget. It was sixteen thousand and so odd dollars unbalanced, so Becky, is Becky in here?
Brandon, can you address that? Can you address my budget? Did you get the email?
Anyway, when anybody presents a budget, mail it in, it has to be a balanced budget. And we're, they had lined out them four thousand on one line, and I think they took it to the training, out, but it don't balance.
I have forty-one, fifty-two.
I have been, now we're talking about the clerk's association, and they're not allowed to do that, and it's not correct, and then he's already been able, and I've been in contact with Brandon about it.
We give you a cap, Becky.
I don't think they're allowed to do that, I'm not here to argue, I'm just telling you, if y'all can't work with me, I'm going to...
We're going to work with you.
So is her, does this need to be on your budget?
No, I already balanced that, you all just have to tell us at the right to do that, according to... I thought Brandon had talked to y'all about that.
Have you got another copy of that?
I did.
Did you?
Yeah, he told me he went in Saturday just to do that.
I got a question. Did you give your clerks a raise January before your budget was passed?
I'm not here to discuss that, that's none of your business about my rights. I can tell you this right here is illegal once you are bid, you put these girls' salaries out like this, that's illegal.
You got a cap, maybe two or five thousand dollars.
I did my cap, and my cap was accurate, and me and Mitch was discussing...
If we wanted to go five, we said to cap to two oh five. It's up to you to balance in between the two oh five cap.
Let's not discuss the cap, look what you did today, and you know why you done it, Donnie?
What?
Because I wasn't going to do what you all asked me to do. Is that not...
Whatever you want to say, it gets up to you.
Okay, all I'm saying is, I'm not here today to argue with you like you like to do with me. If you all don't settle my budget like I've asked you, I've done what you've asked me to do. If you don't settle my budget, the clerks association has hired an attorney. And here, once again, you get a court, because you want to explain fire with me.
Court the statute, it's ours, up to the fiscal court.
You have so much of the priorities, I'm not an attorney, Donnie.
And set your cap, and that's what we give the same...
If you want to let a lot of attorney just...
The same number that you had last year. Whether you give your girls a raise, that's it. Explain to the people exactly what they are...
I'm not arguing with you, I've...
Two oh five, if they can have it.
And you discussed that.
You can give it to them, in six months, you can give it to them in a year, it's up to you, baby.
That's it, that's it, here. When you're trying to get, we don't, I don't want to be here all day, and we ain't going to get any...
Well, if I can't discuss it...
We getting these jobs out, and if you get your copy of those, your copy ready, if you want...
Now, while I even come to your meeting, boy, if I can't discuss it, then, in a light way, that stuff that you don't want to hear, evidently, I'm here to represent my district, Becky.
Whatever, Donnie, I'm not here to argue...
You're a judge like the courts don't go, well, you go ahead and do that.
I like what?
Courts, courts.
I've never, you know, when you brought up the court thing, I was like, let me explain this to you. The reason the court thing was brought, I wasn't even an employee here. It's because I had twelve hundred hours took from me at my sick time.
You weren't an employee at, on...
When I filed that, no, I was not.
On April twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, you wasn't...
When I filed that, I was not an employee.
Look at it.
No, that's when they went to trial, but when I filed it, no, I wasn't.
But you sued county over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, took corners, where Lord Steeves and John Lester Smith, and we passed that, the people look at it.
I wrote some stuff, I could let them look at, Donnie.
Well, now, we got any paper today, I have to go through the proper channel work, I put...
Why don't you carry on personal stuff and not use a little...
Yeah, why don't you?
Here, 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 hey, just try to go through this thing, you want to address it, Brandon, you need some more time, or...
Well, I've been, while I was at the county attorney's meeting last week, John Estle, who is Mason County Attorney, who represents the clerk's association, contacted me about this, and it's his position, and he cited a couple of statutes here, that the fiscal court just approves the maximum amount of action. And the clerk has to, has to balance that under that amount. Right, and doesn't have the authorization, the fiscal court can't lie, you just give them the full amount of money, and then she decides how to speak. Okay, so it was that...
It has to be a reasonable, right, Brandon, reasonable, right?
Well, I mean, it's, and they're, right, I mean, the statute always says it has to be, okay? So in that situation, then you guys authorize the maximum amount that she gives, and she has to work it out. Same thing I do, what I get from the state of child support, definitely what I get, I work it out. So that's, just to use myself as an example, okay? So you guys just set your maximum salaries and maximum amount, clerk has to work it out, that's what we need, then if there needs to be...
What are you getting, Donnie? You want my budget?
More items that come on top of that, clerk can certainly come back, and I have the power for you guys to work that out there. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay, so...
So whatever you guys, I mean, you set up the budget, she submits, and you approve whatever maximum budget is required, whether it's training, elections, whatever that sort of stuff, you just set that maximum amount, they're...
I just...
And they took out the, our training expense, they zeroed all that out. And that's what he's saying, you can't change, go to there and change lineups, you have to prove it as a whole.
Mitch, you understand that, don't you?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
My understanding was, and not just on your budget, but on the sheriff, I thought in every year, the O G has budget workshops, and the fee office budgets is the first part of that process. My understanding was, and I could be wrong, but that every fiscal court has two options, to approve the budget as a whole, or on a basis, I know it's how it used to be.
See, I'm not...
Right, right.
I've got, I've got a email here from Rob Brown, yeah, I received that this morning, saying he would strongly recommend, what you did to me personally, is all five of you guys attending the budget workshop.
Wow.
And they, he went off, I mean, he recommended all five of you come.
Says the O G will not approve fee office budgets. This is solely the responsibility of the fiscal court. That's it. However, we must receive a copy of the approved clerk and sheriff's budget before we can begin our review and approval of the county's budget. January fifteenth was the deadline for fee officials to submit their budget to the fiscal court.
I had mine before then. You can't change my numbers, huh?
We approve your budget on January twenty-eighth.
You can change my numbers, and you're all allowed to do that.
It's ready, Becky.
Can you change my number?
They consider maximum, they...
They...
They consider maximum amount, whatever that adds up to, it says the maximum amount. Well, they just need your personal maximum amount to go up there, no matter what the line on it is, so you got, it's about as broad as it is, long as we're quite honest with you, yeah? And if you, whatever you approve, you approve it to the number of two hundred thousand dollars that's there, it goes to the average of the court. Does that make sense to everybody?
Problem is, and she knows it, she gave her clerk's raises, and she can't do that with a two hundred five thousand dollar cap, she knows.
Donnie, I have the two workers that I had never gave a raise since I've been clerk. So, Becky, you shouldn't have to throw that up, look at the county workers that got raises, and I don't budge into y'all's business. I've never done that else, I don't care who y'all give a raise to.
We set a cap at two oh five, that should have been planned.
But when I met with you all, you all agreed with my numbers, did you all not?
She got the numbers.
We ever made it, I agree with you whatsoever.
Yes, she did, when we all met in here that night. And Mitch will tell you what he, he'll tell me the truth right now, did you all not, when you met with me? You all said, we agreed with your budget, and that's when we had the other discussion, if I would do a favor, and then Mitch, I met with you right in here, and I should be, and you said, everything's cool, we're going to pass your budget. And I said, it feels good, and which one worked, together, and it won.
Thing happens every year with you, every year, it's always, you never take, take one, okay?
Well, the statute says to fix the reasonable, the reasonable maximum amount, that's what you... I thought that crazy one, thought it was a two oh five, I mean, the same as last year. I've got to have that money.
And...
What they've been banking for.
I paid everything. I paid the health insurance, and the retirement's going up, we had that figured and showed you all that.
I understand, that's all right, I knew it was right.
Right, it's all right, right, right here's a little change, but y'all stretched on.
The numbers that we had that you paid everybody, that, I think it was less than two oh five.
No, and me and Mitch figured that out, Mitch agreed with us, Mitch had...
Now, what is it?
Row four, eight, twenty-six, right here it is.
Okay, yeah, I clarify, based on the rates of pay that Ashley and I discussed in it right here, it would take the two hundred and twenty-one thousand, based on...
Right, and you agree with me on that?
Two forty-one? Based on the rates of pay she gave me.
And we explained, like, that was the way it was, and y'all agreed with me.
Was that the rate, two of them seventeen dollars, and one fifteen, more twenty dollars there, or more than that? Had to be more.
That's right. So, does something change from the end of that?
It didn't change, well, but I can just stick right in here and talk, it did not change, nothing changed.
No, what he asked me was, the rates of pay that Ashley and I discussed, same as for county, right, that's what he asked me.
Yeah, but, does nobody, do y'all want to give raises to nobody?
What is that rate of pay that you're paying, exactly?
I mean, do you think that's appropriate, is that what it's, my solid six quarter house? It's compatible with... Well, I'll tell you one thing, when I called around, when the paper was put in the paper, my girls were paying less than the other counties, it shocked me. And for a bookkeeper, for what Ashley does on the front line, and the bookkeeper and the reporter, she's underpaid. The other clerks cannot believe I harden her for what I'm paying her. And I'd say right back here, the Mueller guy will also vouch for me, while I'm paying her, she's underpaid.
I have a question, yeah, no?
You're paying four employees, Becky, on a two hundred five thousand dollar...
That's everything, Donnie, that's their retirement, that's their health insurance, and you still, y'all pay their health insurance.
It's got to be paid, Donnie.
Most clerks says if you pay one family insurance, you have to pay everybody's. And I pay everything I might offer, y'all, give me one penny, unless I'm trying to turn over money to you all.
The less it takes to run your office...
Okay, let's just end, if you don't want to do it, we'll just go.
The more the taxpayers get to run this county, Becky, it's a sample, it's not your money.
Yeah, but I think...
I don't, that's why I'm trying to save money for the county, yeah.
The more, the less that you can run your office and the vicious that you can run it, the more tax dollars this county gets.
Right, that's why I drive to Hazard and all the surrounding counties, and get the car working, bring it.
Well, that's good.
It's good, I tried to give it, Clark, I really did.
Nobody's, nobody's saying nothing about that.
I mean, you know why.
Won't bother me about it, I mean, y'all ain't going to hold on, I mean, they gonna...
We don't have a revenue, there's no YouTube on there.
But, I tell you why, and this is just my opinion, everybody's got one. Y'all sitting here, and I don't even know what the conversation was between you, the three masters, me, and Becky. But I do know, if you all promised her you all would go ahead and approve her budget, if she would get me to do some stuff, and I still don't know what it was. But that is just dead wrong, that's wrong to even bring that.
That is probably hearsay, or it could have been a general matter, but I don't think the three masters promised her that was done, that would change it, whatever.
I don't know, that's just my opinion, I have to...
That's, that's my opinion, too.
I feel it deserves me that, that was brought up the other day, y'all didn't...
I was supposed to get you to pass their expense, and that's why my expense was taken from me. That's right.
Did they say that?
I didn't say...
Did they say it when you been here?
I didn't, they didn't. They couldn't hang fool, Mitch was lying, hanging fool by something, I wasn't in that company.
We just trying to break the case, man, those things.
Nobody has recognized me.
You asked me.
So, the issue, the issue is, let me make sure I understand, is that you, you passed the budget, but it's not, but it does not include the money for tracking. Or you just passed a maximum budget you expect...
They just exempted it out, too, they exempted...
They changed two of that, her budget.
From what, her budget is passed on a line item basis, same as with last year. You didn't have a problem with last year, actually.
And that's, and that's the opinion that is stated in this evening. And John and I both spoke with the representatives of the O G, and also, thank all, while we go down there as far as the appearance were concerned, and there were different opinions. And John's position is, as he states, that the, these states, that if there needs to be litigation, they will have. Right, that's just to check out the records before we go ahead and say. You guys, either, what you need to do, whether you slide it out or not, is to approve the maximum budget, or is that what you did in the prior...
You did it on January twenty-eighth.
Right. So, the only thing that happened with that, for it to be amended, is if her wife bring forward, and I believe that's what she's doing now, saying that she wants that amount added back to her budget, you guys can give the vote for that, or not.
Do you might want to make a motion to go ahead and add the line item to the maximum budget, and have it go on up? You have a second?
So they are aware that it's a court case after that, Mr. Estha talking about children, they knew that the clerks association had hired a lawyer to represent them, and it would be a court case.
Which meant fifty percent of her talent weren't, I want to see what's wrong with nothing.
Do they need to make sure that they say this... Question? Question?
I'm going to make a motion to, I'm going to second that motion, Ray Moore.
No.
Hill Tenter.
No.
Donnie Bush.
No.
Roy Darrell. Okay. Consideration approval of Breckin County Sheriff's Budget 2020. I hope it ain't longer than that process, but I have took these numbers and worked them, and I don't, we've already got a jail running a county. And I just want to take my time and walk through these numbers. First, first thing I want to bring up is, last year's budget was approved at a hundred fifty thousand dollar max. That was up thirty thousand dollars from Ray Williams, he's, uh, budgeted in twenty eighteen. And then, on top of that, then, that didn't include the twenty-five thousand dollar program that forty-two all are looking to give to the sheriff's department. This year, give maximum salary for deputies, and full-time salary wages, part-time salary wages, health insurance, insurance other than health, and employee made social security, um, two hundred forty thousand. That's a ninety thousand dollar increase over last year's maximum.
You got state support, jurors, you got...
Uh, let me, let me go ahead and read, just try to lose some order, man, I've got, I've got the numbers, uh, I guess, y'all got a nineteen ninety-two budget, is this y'all...
Four six, two forty.
Four six, two forty?
Well, I know, yeah.
Should be two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six.
Okay, well, I've got, I got two forty. Then with the two twenty-six, you made it.
I changed that, we talked about Dylan Baker not coming on the later years. And what about Iron Hill Baker?
Uh-huh.
We talked about, we got more accurate information now, the original budget I mentioned January first, that doesn't happen, so I adjusted the budget, and I reduced the request to about two twenty-six.
Okay, so two twenty-six.
Also, it's about seventy-nine thousand, that A O C, that's reimbursed from the state, that's in that...
That's seventy-six thousand dollar increase. Let me run through the numbers here, one at a time, if y'all got any questions, let's talk about it. First of all, in twenty twenty, his receipts was going to go five twenty-nine, nine oh two ninety-one. Last year's receipts, of what I've got here on twenty nineteen, was four hundred and fourteen thousand. That's an increase of a hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred two dollars. And I know the paper that I've got on top here, it's a sixteen thousand dollar increase.
The final budget from last year was five hundred and fourteen thousand. Four hundred and fourteen thousand, our version didn't include the hundred thousand dollars, stayed around.
Does it pay a lot?
Stayed as much as a hundred thousand dollars, but it added two hundred and fourteen, so the final version of last year's budget ended in five hundred and fourteen thousand.
Okay, so, on the budget sheet, you didn't have five fourteen, but when you told me that it was five fourteen...
I've got, I've got...
I've got what we bunged on the past last year, when I got one on file.
I've got one here, January twenty-two, for nineteen, for five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. The version you're looking at didn't have the stay of thanks, but it has a hundred thousand dollars.
Is that, is that from on file or is it clerk's office?
It's on file, the sheriff's office.
Now, here's the one voted on, one twenty four, here is one twenty five. Has that got filed on real off the page?
Hold on, this one's five fourteen.
Has that ever been filed in clerk's office?
I just figured that out for you. Actually, you said, uh, they said the sheriff's.
We're not here for what you're voting on. Did we read the budget?
Uh, what are you saying?
The four four.
Hundred thousand dollar line, so the paper that filed, there, read me hundred thousand on the short field. Thank you.
So actually, our budget, proposed budget only increased to fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand nine hundred and two dollars and ninety one cent? Okay. Okay, so that clarified that number. The next thing, and then you talked there on, uh, grants, uh, you didn't have anything in grant information figured out. And I called Jennifer, uh, actually on. Can you go to, you already got the number again? The crews, the two crews that, uh, on order to be here, does anything now, were that right at sixty thousand, it was just a few pennies less, you said, than sixty thousand. So, that needs to be put on your, um, budget form. We've got grants that, it'd be federal or state, state, I imagine. Um, and then, be another fifteen thousand dollars that the quarter has to contribute to that.
That's all the court has to contribute, not sixty thousand.
Right, but you have to put in, on your line item for your salary, uh, grant. Just like last year on the original, it was thirty six, and this year it's blank, so we need to put sixty thousand in, and then fifteen thousand will be, uh.
So it costs fifteen thousand, of course fifteen thousand.
Yeah, for two cruisers. So, uh. That's on that. And then, um. And I'm not even gonna give the sheriff's salary amount, it went up a tad, but I mean, John ain't got nothing to do with that, the court ain't got nothing to do with that, he is, uh. Just like county judge, treasurer, the state said, they're paying the population time spent in office, so, um. We don't need to discuss that, but on his deputy's salary, here, here was, uh, here was one that went from sixty two thousand and three dollars to ninety four thousand dollars. Uh, with an increase of thirty one thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. Um. If you wanna make a notation on that.
How much?
Uh, it went from, um. Sixty two thousand and three dollars to ninety four thousand dollars.
I got eight and a half, I got close to ninety four thousand.
Hmm, that's what's on the, coming on the budget. And then.
Which one is it, Terry? It's the ninety nine, which one was the name you said?
Sixty two oh three.
Thanks, I'm not taking that true. Nine is sixty two thousand. Four. Forty forty.
The twenty twenty one, it got ninety four on mine. So, our, our value increased, uh. Then the next thing, uh, A O C workers. Here's one that Terry can justify the numbers on it, uh, last year they budgeted thirty four thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars for, uh, A O C workers. This year it went up to sixty nine thousand eight hundred and eighty eight thousand, eight, eight hundred and eighty eight dollars. That's an increase of thirty five thousand three ninety two, but when you done the numbers, you and the A O C worker all right there?
We, we hired some, we hired another, more A O C during the middle of the year. And the seventy thousand dollars reflects current staffing, but we're reimbursed.
Yeah, we get, we actually get a dollar over there for every employee we got.
We got a dollar on ours, so.
That number pretty much a worship number.
We should get, we should be adding to that figure.
We wanna call it that. The next thing, social security. And I guess this is what Becky was pertaining to, uh, fifteen thousand seven hundred and sixty four dollars, up to twenty one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars ninety five cents. Uh, seventy six dollar increase. And then on, uh, employee hazard duty pay, it's going from twenty eight thousand four hundred and thirty eight dollars to thirty one thousand four hundred and sixty six dollars. With another increase of three thousand.
Well, that's three to slide interesting, on retirement.
Right, hazard duty.
Yes.
Right.
All retirement.
And then the retirement, for some reason, y'all didn't have anything down on retirement last year, right Terry? When y'all done the budget? And this year it's twelve thousand, let's see, I gotta get over it, twelve thousand one hundred and sixty six dollars and ninety, ninety five cents. Um, employee health insurance, it went from twelve thousand two ninety three to fourteen thousand seven fifty three. Increase of twenty four hundred and sixty dollars. Accounting, uh, I think last year they had broken down the contract, if you got the nineteen budgets there, it was eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. And it went up sixty five hundred dollars to twenty five thousand.
I, uh, they had design services, which last year was roughly forty five hundred or five thousand dollars, so they're included in that line item this year.
Okay, and then what, when they last year? Do you remember?
Uh, no, I mean, I guess we used an estimate last year.
Okay. And then next year is more concrete numbers, I mean, versus last, last year, the first time.
Right.
And this may have other things. Okay, uniforms, uh, last year you had six thousand dollars allotted for uniforms, this year you got ten thousand dollars. That's a four thousand dollar increase on that.
We probably spent a lot more than six thousand dollars last year, we had a lot of uniform for all new departments.
Uh, I just wanna watch you have the budget, do you know what to, what Jack just spent, Terry?
Uh, no, I don't have it with me, but I could. I guarantee it was probably more than six thousand.
Right.
Last year.
And I, and I'm just, I'm just going over the numbers, uh, uh. But, but I hear the number that I just, uh, can't hardly see how we can do anything about it, that on a fiscal court, uh. Uh, support thirty six thousand dollars, uh, program support. About every offer we got is being cut. And on this year, given nobody, the population is going down. That's another thing I encourage everybody to take part in the safety, because we get somewhat per person and, uh, some people probably ain't being county, but, uh. We got people that leave the county to go find work and other things are just moved, moved away. But, uh, I just wanted to bring all them numbers up to, to par and, um.
I think, I think sheriff department, in my opinion, is one of the most important departments in the county. You got, you got, uh, drug problems. I don't see nothing wrong with having an adequate sheriff department.
What, um, couple things I'd like to do there, uh. And I know I've got, I even pulled Ray's budget out from, when he was in office last time. I think the population was probably more then than it is now, but, um. And when I was looking through it, I was surprised to see in January sixteenth, y'all passed a budget and maxed, uh. The sheriff's office added thirty thousand dollars on sixteenth of January. They included full-time salaries, overtime, part-time, vacation, health, employment, and employee match social security. Again, I'm all for having adequate sheriff department when we head back then too.
The ring is on tears, what he had.
And, uh.
Free?
Here, 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 here.
Free, sure.
Here, here.
Didn't have some, didn't have some budget issues, I agree. And, uh, like some things went on the word that I'm not going to weep, but that's one reason the numbers you were going out there is with it, but they are.
But, but five days later, uh, you all wanted to give him a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you give him, uh. Uh, ninety thousand dollar increase. Again, uh. Maybe y'all didn't think it was safe back then, there didn't have a, uh, adequate sheriff department, uh. But that's not for me to decide that number, I'm here to try to work a number out, and I think we're gonna have to come up with a number. Whoever sheriff is, even if it was, even if it should be. Uh, we have to have a number, we have to have a number. Again, uh. We don't leave no comments, um.
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's approval, I believe, is out of the way.
Second.
What's in the amount of two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, buddy?
Right.
Thirty six thousand dollar progress report for the fiscal court?
And one thing I will say about that, for all five of you all, that will include the twenty five, that does include the twenty five percent match. Um, that we upgraded for, on the USDA grant, so really, you gotta take that.
And I want to say something to y'all.
About the A O C, comes the total over on the A O C.
Sixty nine thousand eight hundred and eighty eight dollars, that's a worship.
Sixty nine.
Sixty nine, eighty eight. And it was on our last year, but it was, uh. They, they, that was thirty four, and they hired more employees and, and, uh.
So then, oh, so two twenty six, sixty nine, eight, ninety eight will be reimbursed.
But again, I hope y'all, I hope y'all, I hope y'all looked at this budget and, and really looked at the numbers. Because we have got a jail that's on the verge, I mean, we, we escaped, we, that's what we done, we escaped by a year last year with our, with our jail. With our co-service money going down, y'all know that. We took a opinion of what we got last time, and what we do, just try to put it back in the jail fund.
We tried to approve the co-service two hundred and eighty four thousand, not a co-service grant for.
And we put it all back in the jail.
And you, uh, for whatever reason, it ain't passed yet.
Uh, we had our first reason on it, that was the first thing on order meeting, we gotta put it in the paper and put it late and high on it.
We had our first reason on the twenty first, and all you had to do, the twenty eighth meeting, was change the motion to the secretary, done the other.
Okay, Brandon, you wanna go, just, go address that, Brandon.
Yeah, go address it, I, I.
I read you guys a letter that addresses that, I'm gonna teach you, you about my discussions with the O G, so, I believe that that. Okay, my recommendations are there.
But that's why I didn't want this matter signed.
We gotta move to the second on the court.
Before we do this. And we will wait for a vote. I'm just hoping that you all have looked at the numbers, because there ain't no way we can run a sheriff's department and pay for a jail budget and have county work. And if you all have looked at it, you choose to do that, if that comes to a layoff, I'm just letting you know that's what it's gonna be. So, uh, who made the motion on that?
I did.
Who's saying that?
I did.
Dylan Kinger?
Aye.
Tony Bush?
Aye.
Roy Darrell?
Aye.
Trey Moore?
Aye.
I've got one also. Uh, motion, Darrell B.
Motion, second.